I called to order the Planning Commission meeting for Atascadero on February 7th, 2023. And Randy, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I don't have my mini flag tonight, so.
Ah, bummer. Well, I'll just imagine the flag.
There we go.
There we go.
Ah, there we go. All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Annette, you want to do real call?
Yes. Commissioner Anderson?
I'm here.
Mr. Carranza?
I'm here too.
Commissioner Heath?
Present.
Commissioner Hughes?
Here.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aki.
Vice Chairperson King?
Here.
And for the record, Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff will be absent tonight, so we have six present and one absent.
Perfect. And then can we get an approval of the agenda?
I'll vote to approve the agenda.
All second.
Okay, Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, so this is the time for public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the commission has jurisdiction. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please state your name for the record before making your comments. And yeah, is there anybody raising their hands?
I see nobody raising their hands.
Okay, so we will close public comment. And then we have the consent calendar.
I move to approve.
Second.
Oh, you're muted, Annette.
There, can you hear me?
There we go.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, so we will move into the public hearing portion. So I just have a quick question. Do we need to do Barrel Creek first because we left public comment open or do we do number item, item number two first?
We do not need to do Barrel Creek first. The Planning Commission sort of has authority over which items and what places to start them at and where to leave them open, so we would move on to item two listed on the agenda.
All right, then we are ready for, do we have a presentation?
We do.
Awesome.
Yes.
Oh, we need to do our party first.
Oh, you're right. I'm so sorry. Okay, so disclosure of ex parte on item number two, ten one zero eight five O LLC vesting tentative trap tracked map for ten eight fifty El Camino Real. Um, Dennis, do you have any ex parte?
No ex parte.
Randy, ex parte?
No ex parte.
Uh, Greg, ex parte?
No ex parte.
Jason?
No ex parte.
And Victoria?
No ex parte. Just want to say that I was hoping to reach out to Nick from Public Works Department and Kelly did mention to me today that he would be available for text message tonight because he's out sick, so.
Okay, and I have no ex parte either, so now we're ready for the presentation.
All right, thank you. All right, Mariah actually was the staff planner on this project, but she is added training this evening, so I'm going to give you the details on this. It's actually a project that was approved some years ago. It was originally known as the Heartbird Project. It's now just referred to as ten eight fifty El Camino Real. You, if you've gone by the site, you've probably noticed there's ongoing construction. They're already building the single family homes that are on this property. It's actually all one big property and when they got the project approved, it actually got approved along with this map to subdivide it into ownership units. So here's an outline of the parcel. It's in this multi-family zone, RMF twenty four, south end of El Camino Real, in between El Camino Real, Highway one oh one. Originally, there was a single family home on the property. It's surrounded on both sides, north and south, by existing residences on Kelly Cynthia and La Costa Court. Originally, it was twenty seventeen when this got approved. It was actually a planned development. That means the property actually got rezoned. And then they got a map approved at the same time to lay out this subdivision so that each property could be individually owned. That map actually expired in twenty nineteen and just recently, just last year, they decided they wanted to turn an apartment portion of the project in the back into condominiums so they could be individually sold. So now they've come back in with that alteration. And so basically, it's a new tentative map. But does that mean it's a new project? No, it's not really a new project. The description of it's changed slightly uh, because they haven't built that back portion yet, so it's going to change just a little bit. But in essence, it's already an approved project. It's already under construction. The sequo portion of the project is already completed. And it's, you know, whether or not the map gets approved is going to continue being built. In twenty seventeen, we approved seventy-five units on this property that included forty-eight apartments. That included twenty attached townhomes and seven single-family residential cottages. And then the amenities that go along with that, the landscaping and all the other features. So the slight revision, essentially, the biggest difference here is that apartment building in the back instead is going to be an ownership product with forty-three condominium units, very slight changes to the design. And then the rest of the project is very similar. It's already under construction. Here's a site plan. Here's how it lays out. It does essentially put a new street coming off of El Camino Real. The more single-family nature of the project, although there, some of them are attached, make sure they're all attached for the most part, are along the street and then the rear of the site has what was the apartment portion of the project, which is now proposed to be ownership condominium units. So really only minor changes from the original approval. Our staffs looked at the zoning and our municipal code and our subdivision regulations. The project's still consistent with all of that. They're just trying to keep this an ownership project. Moving forward, I mentioned before about the environmental document that was completed way back in twenty seventeen. It was adopted by the council on August eighth of twenty seventeen. And the review and appeal periods for that document passed. Tonight, the recommendation from staff would be to adopt the resolution to approve this vesting tentative track map would be the thirty-one lot subdivision, forty-three residential airspace condo units on that existing lot and subject to the findings and conditions of approval. Now, it sounds like we're approving a brand-new project. We're not. We're just basically reviving a map that has died, doing slight changes to that map. And the project is still moving forward. Whether this happens or not, you will notice there's conditions of approval and here several of them, very significant conditions that are tied to this map. But in essence, at the end of the day, with individual ownership, you're very likely to get a higher quality product than the project being all rental, which would be the case if we weren't to prove the map. So anyway, at this point, I'm happy to answer your questions. Long pause, that's okay.
Dennis, go ahead.
Is there the, we have condominiums, we have lots. Are there homeowners association documents that cover both piece, pieces? Are they separate?
That will be up to the owner as to how they do associations. It could all be one association. It could be an association for the condo and for the other type of units. It depends how they would like to do that, but this is, if they get this map, it does become what we would call a common ownership project. They're going to be sharing common spaces. They're going to be sharing some access. And so there has to be some governance to that nature.
And between lots six and seven, that's an access easement that goes back?
You know, that's a good question, what that number is on the map, that one thousand three hundred and forty-five.
I believe it might be related to drainage.
So the path or the dash lines, does that represent?
Yeah, there's several of those throughout on both sides of the project that accommodate drainage. What they've done in this site is they have done some substantial grading here. There's retaining walls on both sides. They've changed the elevations of the site to be able to accommodate drainage, to be able to comply with the engineering and the regional water standards on the site. So there's several of those areas where you do see what do appear to be drainage easements running through the parcels.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Victoria.
All right, so yeah, I had texted this to Kelly specifically to what you just last mentioned, Phil, around the, give me a second to read my notes here, around the the drainage easements. Is there an engineered reviewed document that the developer has that's that's proving that there's an identification of securing those easements for overflow routes?
Yes, in every scenario where there's a development like this, but we're not, you're not seeing off-site easements. They would have those secured. Now, if it was all one property, they wouldn't need easements. So what you're seeing on here is proposed easements should they get approved to have this map. This doesn't involve, this particular map, as shown, doesn't involve properties that are outside of this boundary. And if you're referring to that, that's a different circumstance. But in terms of these easements, they're proposed to go with this map so that in the future, when these properties do sell to individual ownership, that these easements will remain on the map, on the property. If that makes sense.
Correct, because this is the ten eight five zero property we're talking about.
This is that property, yes.
Right, and so I believe the other commissioners did get a letter that was written by someone from an attorney company in San Luis of a neighbor who had, had gotten that document written up and that letter sent to us for review. I think people are shaking their head that they have received it. So I was just taking a look a little bit and yeah, it just, they did not see that there was any document like that and when they tried to go look for it, other than just a yes and surrounding properties. And so I know that this is not about that specific parcel we're looking at. I just thought that that would be something that we needed to talk about.
Yeah, so the property during some, not the super recent storms, but the storms the year before did have some erosion control and sediment control issues on the property. Those are sort of not related to their overall hydrology and drainage analysis for the particular project. And it's our understanding that those those issues not in terms of, you know, potentially any damage that was done to existing neighboring properties, but in terms of their erosion and sediment control to date has been brought up to a total required standard. And so those issues are a little bit separate. There would be no, no easements required for sort of for an accident or for construction-related sediment or erosion control that did not go as planned. But there are, there will be easements recorded with this map across all of the lots as part of this map to accommodate drainage on site. And those easements don't exist yet because the map is not approved to move forward yet.
So in essence, a lot of the correspondence that you may have seen is in association with construction of the project and previous storm events that have impacted adjacent properties. We're fully aware of that as a city and working with that developer to make sure that everything is right moving forward. But that is not a component of tonight's review. It doesn't impact this particular map and the map doesn't impact the existing or future drainage of this particular property. So it's a very separate issue. Even though obviously the neighbors want to discuss that topic, it's not associated with this particular request for entitlement.
Sure, it is the same developer though, correct?
It is the same developer. He is asking for this, yes, but it doesn't alter or change the fact that the project's already built for the most part.
Correct, yeah, I understand. I think the frustration that I'm hearing as a a citizen who's on the Planning Commission is just that there's a developer that hasn't resolved issues from previous construction that is continuing and then asking for approval for more construction, which I get it, it's legally not anything to do with, so it, yeah.
The reality is, he does, he's not actually asking for more construction. This map entitlement will actually give the city additional leverage to ensure that all the private and public improvements are done more appropriately. And without this map, we may not have as strong as an ability to do that. So that's really, long story short. So this actually could improve things, even though he's asking for more. He's not asking for more development. They're just asking for the recordation of ownership and easements. And then as a feature of that, we have a series of conditions tied to it, which should in theory improve the situation.
I thought that was worthy of discussion though, because it seems like this is a very long process that it is not a little blunder, it sounded like, so. Yeah. Okay, thank you for sharing those thoughts and Kelly, thanks for weighing in.
Nice word, blunder.
Yes. Thanks, Dennis.
I don't hear it that often.
Well, that's good.
So I have a quick question. If we, so if we don't approve the map for individual ownership of the condominium units, then they would be built anyway as rental units with the map, even though it's expired?
They could build this entire project as a rental apartment project because the underlying density of the zoning allows for that. The zoning allows for attached units, the zoning allows for the number of units, so the zoning won't go away. The planned development won't go away and nor will the the zoning go away. So really, this is about whether this becomes individual ownership or not. And obviously, the map probably does leverage financing to be able to continue completing the improvements in this project. So, but yeah, they could build it without that. And I think from a city's perspective and probably from the neighborhood perspective, it might be a preference to have this as of an ownership project.
All right, any other questions for Phil?
Well, yes, yes-ish for Phil, a Phil-ish question. It's regarding who will this benefit if this is approved? Will it benefit? You know, the city, will it benefit the owners, the renters? You know, I'm looking at it from that perspective. And our housing needs.
There's multiple, I think everybody would benefit from this becoming an ownership project. I think the city doesn't receive any financial benefit, other than the fact that maybe additional properties to assess, but reality is, I think the neighborhood's going to see a benefit because you're going to see additional assurance about the conditions of approval being completed on this property to improve the property beyond the condition it's currently in today. But obviously, the developer will receive a benefit because they'll have individual ownership once they record the map. And we won't record the map until all of their obligations on improving the site have been completed. Which means if there's outstanding issues surrounding this property, the map could be held until those are resolved.
Whereas if it's a rental property, it's owned by one, all of those units are owned by one person.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't have as much control to file the map.
Well, we, certain conditions of approval may not be as
Enforceable?
Enforceable.
Okay.
I mean, it's still the same project, so it's interesting discussion. I hate to say it that way, but it does give us additional leverage to ensure, gives us additional mechanism, which is the recordation of the map to ensure that those features are completed.
Gotcha.
I think they would, you know, right now, the only leverage there is, is a grading permit or building permit.
Or occupancy, yeah. I mean, obviously, our biggest leverage is occupancy. We won't let people occupy units unless the improvements are done to a certain level.
Yeah, but the point is the, is the grading permit at this point. Or a construction permit.
Well, they're actually, yeah, they're actually building units now, so.
Okay, if there's, do you have a question, Jason?
Um, not really. I was just, I was wondering what or restrictions we would want to put on it for, I mean, it seems like it's going, going forward and it seems like these these improvements are sufficient. I read the letter and I don't see where anything we would be doing would be changing what happened, so. Yeah. If you, if there's a clarification that I'm missing, you know, feel free to.
Well, yeah, before we, and I'll just remind her, before we get into any deliberation, let's, you know, if you're done at, asking questions, we probably should go out to the public and or the app.
Yeah, okay, so if anyone, we'll open public comment. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand or if you're on the phone, I believe it's star six. Confirmation of that, maybe?
It might be star nine to raise the hand.
Star nine?
To unmute.
Okay, so star nine, if you're on the phone or raise your hand in Zoom and we would be happy to hear your comment.
Great, our first person with their hand up is, oh, was was Paula. Paula. Paula, are you looking to make comment?
Yes, I am.
Hand go up. Oh, there you go, okay.
Sorry. My name is my name is Paula Ramsom. I have invested in several properties in Atascadero over the last twelve years. I really like the town. I own a custom home at nine twenty La Costa Court. It's adjacent to this property. It sounds like you may have read my, the documents that I gave you. My home was flooded and on January twenty seventh of twenty-one, severely damaged my home. I still have not been able to get it ready to rent again. The developer refuses to take any responsibility for all the damage that he did. He told, the insurance was actually ready to pay out and then they stopped it. They said it was the city of Atascadero's fault. So now I'm stuck, but I heard a comment that now things are better, that since that first flooding, there's been no incidences, but there was a major incident on twelve ten of last year, just a few months ago, where the drain reached capacity. And the only reason my home didn't flood is I was out there in the rain monitoring it. And so were my neighbors. We're all scared to death every time it rains. And the fire department got there in time, was able to save our homes. So this is an ongoing thing and there's, there's a big problem with drainage and I really think that this should this should be assessed at this time. There's also, I have some pictures in there. If you guys received it, of the drain that they put in that drains onto my a drain on my property. It has a inlet on the top, which is, does not address on any of your drainage plans. And consequently, today, there was water squirting out of the drain and it's not raining. So my, my only answer to that is the workers have access to the top of that drain and they were, were using it today. And that is a real concern because there's even, there's going to be even more runoff when they do that back project. There's going to be even more runoff and, and more dangers of flooding my home. The, the construction company dug a trench along El Camino Real and I have pictures of that. If you received it, it goes along from the front of the construction site along El Camino Real. When they installed the block wall, they put in a channel on our side of that wall. And this trench that they dug goes right to that channel that they put. And that channel funnels water, water all the way to my property. This again is not in any other drainage plans, so they're doing these things. They're not on the plans. I don't know if anybody even knows about it. And so this is really concerning to me and I really feel that these need to be addressed before we go any further with construction and because the construction part is what so far has caused all the damage to my home. Hopefully, the other, when it's completely finished, the system will work. I doubt it after what's been happening. There's another real important thing that was not mentioned today. You guys are being told that there's, that there was an approved apartment building for rentals in the back. That was approved for a senior citizen housing. That was not approved for rent, just general rental housing. And because it was approved for senior housing, they reduced the parking requirement for it. That parking requirement, when they changed, when they're asking you to change it now, goes with the, the senior and they got a lot of reduced parking because they say in studies that seniors don't have cars. Well, now it's multifamily, where it's going to be at least two cars minimum per unit. So there's going to be a real increase in parking and there's not going to be enough there. The large multifamily project on the other side of El Camino Real, they park on my street because there is not enough parking for that project and that project didn't have reduced parking. So when this project goes in, if it's approved as is, turning it into condominiums from senior, senior housing, there's going to be a real influx and a real strain on the parking in the neighborhoods and it's going to be my street and the street on the other side, which is single-family homes. And I don't believe that this has been addressed. And I really wish that you guys would take this flooding a lot more serious because it has destroyed my life. I, I live in a nightmare now. Every time it rains, I panic. I have been, I've had a severe financial loss because I can't, I don't have the income from the property. Plus, I had to borrow a tremendous amount of money just to rebuild all the damage that was done to my home. And so I'm sure I probably take up three minutes, so I'm sorry about that. But I really wish that you guys would, would consider this project a little bit more seriously for the residents that live there. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Is there anyone else of the public who would like to make a comment?
I see a hand up for John Belcher.
Okay.
John, go ahead.
Yes, I, I just unmuted. Hopefully you can hear me.
We can, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so Paula's a friend of mine. I represent her. We also have litigation involving the city and the developer concerning those flooding events that happened in her home. I think the big issue for us is that in two thousand seventeen, the city approved the project with an environmental document that didn't even have a drainage study that said, don't worry, just follow visiting policies and everything will be fine. And then it wasn't fine. Flooding in her house was two to three feet deep. And that water came from this site, which is concentrated basically all of its impervious surface and all of its drainage into the eighteen-inch pipe that's on that's on Paula's property. So I agree with Phil that the tentative map affords some opportunities to the city to condition the project further. But I question whether we're doing this cart ahead of the horse again because the map that was shown to you includes some easements for drainage, which I've never seen before in any documents. There is a storm water control plan that the city has approved. It does not include those easements. In fact, it shows the area that's immediately behind the houses next to Paula's house as somehow we don't really know where the water is supposed to go. But now we found out there's a drain inlet into that project. And this is a concern, not only during the construction phase, but also in the permanent phase of the project. So I think Phil's point seemed to be that, yes, there's stormwater controls that deal with construction. That's true. Set of laws, there's a SWIP and there's all these rules that are supposed to be followed. But the basic problem here is that the city has allowed a design. But the basic problem here is that the city has allowed a design, um, or trusted a design that's going to take a hundred and twelve thousand square feet of impervious surface. That's two and a half acres. And, and discharge all of that water at what they consider to be a historic flow into an eighteen inch culvert that's on, uh, Paula's property. Um, in addition, there was twenty five hundred cubic yards of imported fill by some of the documentation. So we've basically decreased the ability of the property to accept stormwater and increased its concentration of discharge. I think that it can be done. It can be engineered. But I don't believe you have the evidence that it's been engineered. I believe that there's promises been made. And I believe Phil has included through his public works division, some conditions, which I think will help the situation. So the question is, should we just plunge ahead and hope that it all works out again, knowing that we have a rainy season here still ahead of us? Or are we just gonna take a leap of faith and say, well, we're pretty sure the engineers will figure this out. Right now, uh, we have drainage being steered every which way by this developer that ends up at this eighteen inch culvert. And it's not on an erosion control plan. It's not on a SWIP. Uh, the fire department sometimes has to come and, and demolish these drainage courses that have been installed outside the existing plans. It, it, it's really, uh, today, the developer was on Paula's property, uh, without permission, just, uh, doing whatever it is they are going to do. They previously demolished their fences. I mean, it's, it's really out of control, I think. Um, so we're just asking the planning commission to take a look because in the negative declaration, the environmental approval from two thousand seventeen was done before any engineering drainage grading plans were enhanced. At least none are referenced in that, in that document. Now we have the benefit of four years of planning. And by the map that you saw earlier, there are these easements, but easements don't solve drainage. Pipes solve drainage. Engineered designs solve drainage. And I think there's a lot of that going on here. It's a pretty sophisticated storage and discharge system. And I'm sure the intentions are to meet all the requirements. But so far, what we've seen, starting with December tenth, is that that eighteen inch pipe, even with all the new sophisticated discharge was at full capacity in a fairly minor storm. And that, that's not construction runoff. That, that is through the facilities that have been designed and installed for this project. So that discharge from this project is, um, is, I, I think the only way to say it is it's a leap of faith right now. And I, if I was on the planning commission, I'd say, well, should I just take a chance and say that, uh, everybody's going to figure it out? Or should we take a couple of weeks and really ask the hard question? Prove it to us. Let's get an engineer here. It's gonna, it's gonna prove that the discharge is going to be taken care of on Paula's property. So without appreciate all your time and effort, uh, consideration. And, um, I know these are hard questions to deal with, but, uh, there are answers. I just don't think we saw them tonight.
Thank you, John. Is there any else, uh, anyone else from the public who'd like to make a comment on this, this item?
It looks like John, um, would like to speak. John, I will unmute you. John, you're on mute. Are you able to?
I'm muted now.
Oh, you're good now.
Okay. Thank you very much for the, the comments. Um, we do have an engineer, um, on the call and the site has been extensively engineered, um, for the water retention, retention onsite.
Sorry, John, uh, sorry. Are you the developer?
I am. I am.
Okay.
Eight fifty LLC. Um, so I do want to make sure that, uh, the, the, a lot of this is displayed and, uh, and we have, uh, gone through extensive, um, engineering, uh, um, with this site. It does have, uh, retention for its water retention for the entire site engineered and has been in those documents that I understand that you're having a difficulty looking for, but it's been there and part of the, uh, development from day one. It's been unfortunate from the beginning, uh, that, uh, during the construction process, early on, when the retention, uh, system wasn't fully in, in place, that, uh, it, it, we had this flooding. Uh, I want to correct a few things for the record. They, I did not, uh, forestall or call, and I, and I do have legal counsel on the, on the, uh, available. If you want to chat with them about that as well. Didn't forestall any repairs, um, actually offered to pay for repairs and the insurance company has, um, accepted the, um, condition and is working, um, to, um, adjudicate in some manner with, uh, for whatever loss you're, you're speaking of. We did this affected two houses, not just one. We fully paid for the house, uh, adjoining house and did the repairs. Um, still haven't been reimbursed at all from our standpoint from the insurance company either. Uh, we did take care of the tenants', um, relocation and, um, took care of them, uh, during that process. Um, several years ago to get to this date. So I do believe it'll be satisfied, uh, fully in, uh, in equitable manner. Um, the, the discharge that you're talking about is the end of the system and it's, uh, it's after and all the onsite drainage, um, um, is set to retain all of the waters. And this has been a hundred, a hundred year flood event in the last one. Um, even though we're still under construction, uh, when it's fully in place, um, we didn't have, uh, um, a substantial negative impact, albeit it needs to be fully completed. And, uh, and, and then, and I think that the most recent in conditions, uh, would test the, uh, that and show that that's the case. So, um, the, uh, comments, um, um, otherwise, uh, they're, they're fully available and once the site is complete and it's getting, um, certainly much closer to a, a completed stage. I believe that we're working closely with the city to ensure any and all, and, um, things need to be done according to the engineering standard to meet that. Um, I, uh, like, for likewise, I own a catty corner across the street, a hundred and forty units and been in this neighborhood for, uh, over twenty five years where we're, uh, every bit is concerned, uh, participants and citizens. Um, and, um, we're not going in here anywhere. We've been here and it's every bit of our, uh, intent to maintain the highest project. The project was, again, some of the facts, uh, stated earlier weren't entirely correct, uh, from the, um, um, call-ins because the unit count was reduced, um, uh, from forty eight to forty three to lessen the impact. The in, the parking was increased, uh, to meet a, uh, a more suitable, uh, parking from its original approval. So all of that was done, uh, in a mindful way to increase and better, um, the project's, um, overall appeal, overall acceptance. Um, we want is the best absolute project for the neighborhood, um, as well as the neighbors would want. And I think we're doing all that is necessary to get there and we, um, are here to, and I'm here to address any of those future concerns, if they are, are future concerns.
Thank you, John. Any other public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Uh, Phil, can you just reiterate what exactly we're voting on today? Because I want to make it really clear that, um, we, we hear the public, but, uh, some of the issues that they're concerned with are not up for vote. And so even if we vote to approve this, we're not ignoring anyone. Um, and I just want to make it really clear what, what exactly we're voting on.
Exactly. And I'd like to really narrow that down and like to express also a concern for the surrounding neighborhoods that were flooded. The city is fully aware of that. Um, and we are working with this developer to help make sure the project doesn't continue to do something like that. It's this, now I gotta remind everyone also, the city does not build development projects, nor are we responsible for development projects. We approve development projects and we review them for consistency with our codes and our standards and regional water board standards. And then they build their development project. And sometimes they go perfectly and sometimes forces of nature do cause issues. And this is very, very unfortunate. Then we feel very badly for what happened to some of these properties during, uh, the storms that, that previously happened here and, um, it's not something that we're ignoring, but then again, I have to focus the planning commission towards what is the context for tonight? What are they asking for? And does that have anything to do with those future or those, those former issues that happened on this property? We have a set of findings to make for a map. We have a set, we have a set of conditions that go along with that. And unfortunately they are not related to the damages that occurred to surrounding properties as a result of the construction and the drainage on this particular property. So it's, it's outside of our purview. Our purview is to say, does this map comply with the state subdivision map act? Does it comply with the city subdivision? Regulations and it comes and found that it does. And we're not able to hold a map hostage because there's an ongoing, um, litigation between the applicant and the neighbors for damages on their property for that.
And this is not about construction. Like this is, we are not approving construction. Yeah.
I do want to answer a couple of questions because there was a change in that rear project from senior units. Now to be, you know, condominium units that would be open for the public. There's still some affordability built into it. But they did change a landscape area into a parking area. Yeah. They did reduce the number of units and staff did review it for compliance and it does comply with parking. Um, so that issue has already been analyzed, but that issue again isn't an issue of the map. It's an issue of the development project that goes on a separate track and has separate approvals to it. So, um, I just wanted to really kind of get the planning commission looking at that issue. And now if there's issues with the map, that's a different story. Um, and we can talk about that, but we shouldn't, um, rely on the, the discussion, the issues we've heard as a basis for approval or denial of the map. We can't legally, and that's the problem. Although I'm deeply concerned about those issues, that's a different topic.
Thank you. Um, is there a remedy if there's someone parking in front of your house and they're not visiting someone in your neighborhood? Is there any remedy or not?
Um, if they're parking on a legal parking spot on the street, there is not. If they leave their car there for more than seventy two hours, there is, we tell them. Our police department does that. Um, but if they're illegally parked, that's a whole different thing. But if just they're parked on a street, public street and there's no, um, parking limitation signs, yeah, the seventy two hour max is it. And that's beyond our control.
Thank you, Phil. Um, yes, Victoria.
Thank you, Tori. So I was looking at, um, some of the conditions of approval and I do hear that comment that was made, I think by either you, Phil or Tori around legally, yes, we're not going to hold this project hostage because of issues that are related, but yet not related to the specific voting that we're doing tonight. Um, and I'm looking at the drainage component of the conditions of approval for, it, it looks like on the printed stuff over here. That's why I keep looking over here. Um, page ninety seven, uh, conditions of approval number thirty nine. It says grading shall be minimized and shall be blended into the natural terrain to reduce impacts. Okay. So that is very, very generic. And I'm curious if there's specific limits on times of year for those things. Um, cause it seems like we already know historically that there's some issues with construction and stormwater in the surrounding areas and I mean, again, I'm not holding it hostage. I'm just saying, are there specific plans that we can make knowing ahead of time about the grading and the stormwater and construction and ti- time constraints on that?
I'm trying to find what.
I think that's Beryl Creek, Victoria.
Oh my gosh. Oh my gosh. Okay. You're right. You're right. You're right. I just saw.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the thirty. Sorry. Um, I was trying to find it, make sure it wasn't taken out of context.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you called that. Um, yeah. Digging, digging. Cause I'm like, okay, I know we're going to either say yes or no, like right now. And I'm like digging really hard.
So this one's forty four, forty two through forty nine ish.
Forty two through forty nine. Thank you. Thank you.
Something like that, somewhere around there.
So regarding that though, I mean, it is the same, same questions regarding the grading and the time constraints on that and knowing we have lots of rain this season coming up and all of that with regards to the easements. Just curious because I know public comment is here and wanting, wanting to know more about that and very concerned.
Sites aren't even graded and built.
Okay.
Now it does say a detailed hydrology study shall be prepared and submitted for review and approval by the city engineer. So is, has that been done?
Yes, that's been done. It has to be done.
That should be on file with the city for people to look at. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, it's all been done. This project is, they've built a big portion of the improvements on his property. The houses are under construction now. So.
Question for Phil. Yeah. So all the grading's been done, but they're still in the process. So wouldn't any water runoff issues, uh, automatically be tagged under their SWIP or SWIP?
Yeah.
Okay. So I mean, that's.
There's inspectors that go out here daily.
Okay. Yeah. Cause it's pretty much supposed to be like Chris, almost crystal clear water going through. So, so there's still something that's policing the water issue. So even if the rains get that bad, if it overruns their site, there's still something that can legally hold them accountable.
Yeah, yeah. They are responsible.
Okay.
In the hydrology study. I see that on number twenty four. Yeah. It seems to me that there are a lot of compliance issues that have been in, uh, you know, disputes in the neighborhood. And I do hear, um, the developer though too, in regards to wanting to make the best choice possible intrinsically for themselves as well, uh, moving forward because they do have investments in not only this development, but he mentioned John did, um, other ones too, across the street, I, I believe. So. Yeah. Um.
Well, and I think that, um, you know, this is a once in a hundred year thing, and I'm not saying, not trying to minimize what happened to that woman's house in any way, shape or form, but you know, we can engineer and we can do the math and we can do everything, but mother nature's going to do what mother nature's going to do. And we can do the best we can. Um, so I'm glad that she's working with the city and she's got an attorney and she's, you know, can get remedies that way. Um, but tonight we just need to vote on the forty eight condominiums to forty three condominiums with the increased parking in this, in this map. So, yes, Dennis.
Um, I, I'm also looking at the conditions. Nine, five, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight and twenty nine that deal with drainage.
Yeah.
Um, just to clarify from my understanding, um, these conditions are carryovers from the original map. That was.
Yes, they are. Yeah.
Okay. So twenty three talks about, uh, subdivisions shall be designed so to intercept cross drainage. Talks about stormwater control, call, talks about stormwater pollution prevention, talks about a detention basin. Talks about sur- subsurface inflow basins. And, uh, also discusses criteria that the project engineer must address that deal with design, drainage rock and over operational requirements. And then there's discussion about overflow path and street improvements. That need, that also is part of drainage as, as things get. Each of these conditions are addressed either to a building permit or to a grading plan. I believe only one, which is the street improvements is tied to a public improvement plan. Um, and so, uh, there are plenty of things here that says drainage is being taken care of. Um, there was a discussion about construction and design. Uh, they are two different things. You can design something perfectly, but that doesn't mean it's going to be constructed that way. And so oversight on construction is extremely important to make sure it's being followed and oversight by the, uh, engineer, uh, design engineer of record. Um, is there any way within? Is there any way within? The conditions that we are seeing for twenty three through. Twenty nine that the timing, which is again, building permit, grading plan, so on. Can that be a change to be associated with detract improvements? Versus building of a building permit for a lot, a grading plan for a lot. Is there any way of? Dealing with all this comprehensively as one one thing versus individual project.
We could probably change the timing on these. I'd love to have my public works division weigh in on that because those are the types of conditions. And mitigation measures that are typically put on by our public works division and. By moving the timing around, there's lots of implications that I may not be aware of. As the development director, so I don't know that. We have Lori or Nick on tonight. I wish we did. I was trying to get them on.
Condition twenty six talks about detention basin. Any drainage basin which has a downstream outlet designed to meter the outflow. Shall be classified as a detention basin. Basin capacity shall be based on receiving runoff from a fifty year storm within the watershed. And in its fully developed condition and releasing the flow equivalent to runoff of a two year storm. Now, this is associated with a building permit or grading permit. To me, that's a subdivision permit of. Type requirement. In other words, a detention basin isn't. Necessarily isolated to one lot. It's the entire subdivision or portions of the subdivisions. And so, again, to me. I think there's enough mitigation and conditions to control the project. But maybe the timing of it might be wrong to address the neighbors' concerns.
Yes.
When you say timing, Dennis, can you be specific? Because I don't understand that part.
So let me explain that to you. There there's a in the actual conditions, there's a suggested timing of when that condition should be implemented and checked. And so on some of them, we have final map, on some we have ongoing, some we have construction. But I believe as staff, we have discretion. To make sure these conditions apply at various times in the project. That was oftentimes, these are done as a best guess. I have to be honest with you about when the most appropriate timing is done on them. But in the end of the day, those conditions are there. And if a condition is tied to a construction permit. It still has to be continuous, but none of those construction permits have been finalized out there. The the difficulty with tying a lot of things to a map is if we approve this tentative map tonight. And we move forward a couple of years and they finish building the project and for whatever reason, they decide not to record it. But they decide to occupy units, which happens from time to time. Then we still have our mitigation tied to a construction permit final and occupancy. Which oftentimes can be really good. So it's really tricky playing around with timing. In a lot of cases, it might not be, you know, you can actually just be open with time and you can just say ongoing, so. I don't know how much bearing that has to it and. Good discussion topic.
Well, yeah, Victoria. A minor word ongoing, though, I'm aware, and this goes back to when I first gave oath as planning commissioner. I remember some of the commissioners that were leaving their seats of office say, just be mindful. That whatever you change, I think Jason knows exactly what I'm gonna say, that whatever you change, especially one word sometimes. Can have severe financial implications to a developer that's been working on a project for sometimes years. So just like I'm empathetic to. And want to make sure we have a lot of oversight, knowing that there's some. Well, now I'm gonna say instead of blunder, some PTSD about drainage and water issues in this neighborhood. I'm also gonna be really empathetic to how much we throw the word ongoing and want to keep adding that to the conditions, because I do. Apologize that I was looking at the the COA of the other project, but I was doing my very best with a very big family fatality right before this call. So I want to remind people, doing my best here. Anyhow, yeah, I guess that's my discussion topic is that one little word can change a lot.
Yes, Dennis.
Like to follow that up, though, and if. Construction permits have been issued for grading, grading plans, permits have been issued, they have conditions within them. There are conditions within every standard permit that. Talks about drainage and not releasing drainage onto offsite properties to control things. There's. Stormwater control documents that have to be in place. So. There are provisions within permits that have been issued that says, these are the things you're supposed to do. And if they haven't been done, then there hasn't been compliance with the construction permit that exists. And so to me, a lot of the things that. As was being said, we don't have control over mother nature. But there are provisions that we could put into place that try to control. What occurs and from what has been discussed. Beyond that, there's an engineer on the job and he's addressing these things. I completely agree with that. But there's been no evidence that there was an attempt to try to. Prevent these things from happening before it started. I mean, again. When I design stormwater things, they need to be in place before the event happens, not afterwards. So I'm I'm just cautious about what's occurring. I do believe that. These things will be taken care of. I honestly do. But I would also say that the timing of when these things are installed need to be addressed. To make sure that there are protection measures in place before an event happens.
So rather than us trying to change the timing. Phil, is it possible that we could ask? The city, could we ask your department to review the timing? I mean, I don't think that we necessarily should be changing timing on this. When we're already into it, there's been building permits. I mean, they. Phil said there's inspectors that have been there and. So, Phil, you've been out there. Was this flood caused by this construction project? I mean, I guess I'm. I'm struggling to make major changes to a project like Victoria said, when. I am not a water expert. I am not an engineer and I don't actually know what caused this and I'm, again, I am not trying to minimize it because I can only imagine. How terrible that was, but at the same time, like. I don't feel confident making any of those kinds of changes. Without like way more information. And again, we're here to change the number of condominiums from forty eight to forty three.
Yeah, that that issue would need more discussion and like I mentioned, input from our public works director. And our city engineer. And I would suggest if you're not comfortable with the timing and that's a significant issue, I'd suggest continuing this item. But you could also recommend staff look at the timing, but I think. These conditions were adopted previously and they're existing today. They're existing as they are right now today on this project and were approved by council on this project. So.
And again, you guys are all fully aware of what's going on. I mean, this is not the first you're hearing of this water issue, right, Phil?
Absolutely not. No, it's been a very significant issue. And I feel very badly for the surrounding property owners and. Your question I cannot answer. I'm not a professional in terms of drainage. I'm not a civil engineer. So I can't tell you whether this project directly caused a drainage. I can with confidence tell you that the city did not cause a drainage change. We don't cause weather and we don't develop projects, so. We don't do that. So I can tell you confidently, that's the case, so. That's all I have to say.
Okay, and I know you did send her the FEMA or someone sent her the FEMA information to report storm damage, so.
Absolutely, and I would strongly suggest that for any citizen in the city of Atascadero. Who's received any type of damage, whether it was due to an adjacent property or due to the weather itself. To work with the disaster recovery center and go to. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, slowrecovery.org if you've had any storm damage whatsoever. Yes, Dennis.
It's correct to say, I mean, even the the subject, the property in which the parcels that have been damaged. That property could be causing the problem. We don't know. The assumption is here because there's. Work that's been going on a long time, but you know, who knows where it comes from. However, I want to say that are we not approving essentially a new tentative map? And we're using old. Conditions from two thousand seventeen on this particular project. This is not a time extension. It's a it's a new tentative map, is it not?
It is a new map because it has to get reconsidered because the other one expired. This is not an extension, so. If there's new conditions that would have pertained to the map. That would pertain to subdividing this property or pertain to compliance with the city's subdivision regulations, zoning regulations or state subdivision map act. Now is the time when those things could could get put on. And it appears that they've carried forward the older condition, so. That's something that could be changed. That's a lot of discussion. I think that's some deliberation with our entire city team. And absent our public works director, again, I'll say that is that's a challenge to do on the fly.
And then. As public works reviewed the conditions. That we're looking at tonight. I would imagine so, but.
Jason.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say something. It was my understanding that this was just a tentative. Update and that it would then go to be reviewed. Could we add on something just to make sure that they go ahead and pay special attention to water drainage to make sure that they didn't miss anything? On the previous permits? Just to address this issue that this neighbor is having to see if there's something that maybe could be. Relooked at.
Let me, I can I can text Nick and see if it's appropriate to ask for an updated hydrology analysis. As part of this mapping process, I don't. Because all of the plans and the grading and drainage is already designed and we have an issued permit that does give them a vested right to. Issue, I'm not sure that we can go back and ask them for updated analysis.
Well, no, I'm 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 talking about the the city would because they're gonna, you you guys, your staff is gonna relook at this map when they. They update it.
Well, and there's final inspections and stuff before people can move in and before the map is recorded, so there's still more oversight to be done. To make sure that things are the way they're supposed to be. So, yeah, we're. Sorry, go ahead.
I I'm sorry. No, I do know that that what what's put on a map and what's put in into planning doesn't always. Come out the other end.
You know. It's an interesting, this is actually a very interesting discussion because here we have. An applicant asking for an entitlement. They're asking for something on this property. And it is a project, any subdivision is a project that. Is discretionary. In other words, it is subject to conditions of approval. So technically, we can add conditions to this project. We can do that as long as there's a direct relationship. To the map itself, like we say, okay, the fact that they're subdividing this now. You know, creates impacts to the drainage that wouldn't otherwise be there before, so now we can add conditions. Or the original conditions were not suitable to accommodate the existing condition. And I think what you just heard from Kelly, our senior planner, is also the fact that we've already issued permits on a large portion of the project. They're already building it. It's already substantially built. Those conditions are already being implemented on the project. So I'm wondering what nexus, what relationship the map would be going forward. On new conditions and I, it's kind of a legal question. I almost wish I had. Our city attorney here and the public works director to kind of discuss this through, because this is a bit new territory for me on that end. In all my years of planning and so. Yeah, it's a good one. So hopefully we'll Kelly will get a response from Nick to bar as she texts him. But he's been out sick. Kelly's been out sick. Mariah's at a conference, so it's not been the greatest staffing level this week. Or a bit challenged.
Jason, did you have another comment?
I'm definitely trying to more on this stuff, but what, you know, I it's it's kind of an interesting thing because. It was supposed to be a simple, just, yeah, you know, we're just updating the map and it's actually a good thing, more parking, fewer spaces. I I'm all for people owning rather than renting, although we do need more rentals as well, but. You know, and then we got this this last minute letter. That I didn't even get to like to something, which usually we wouldn't even see. So I don't, I don't think that the this vote is gonna change anything with the permits that are already issued. I think. You're absolutely right. It'll give us a little bit more leeway in the future for going forward. So if everybody's done, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve it. So we can move on to the big job that I think we're gonna spend a little more time on tonight. And. And. Randy, did you have something to say?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say like, I was gonna second, but you're you gotta read it.
You were in the middle of a yawn, so I didn't. Okay, so is everybody okay with that? I'll go ahead and make the motion to.
I know, I read. The only thing I would like to really understand because it seems like to me. We're here as a commission to, yes, we get agenda packets, we read them, we review them and we make decisions for the for these items. However, there's other things that we could be discussing and putting on our own agendas to discuss with the community development director. So is this? Item necessitating us to want to talk about something that's bigger than this project. It seems like we were talking around it. Regarding public works, regarding timing for things, regarding, you know, legal counsel, and so I'm just. I guess I'm just questioning, not whether or not I'm ready to make. A vote on this particular item. But but could we? As a commission, since we're here, we're not allowed to talk. Otherwise, we're allowed to talk here together tonight at these meetings. For an agenda item that we would want to put.
As like a like an educational thing, like where they answer our questions about stuff or?
Potentially, I just, I don't know, I don't want to. I don't want to just brush over this where we've talked around a topic for almost an hour and then we just don't get anywhere. With with something bigger than this particular map. Do you guys see what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Like in vain, like we've been talking about it in vain, basically is what I'm saying.
Right. Yeah, Dennis.
I, you know, this this map, well, this project has been going on since two thousand and seventeen. It's two thousand and twenty three. What I'm thinking is that I would be. Feel it would be beneficial to continue the meeting. To allow. Public work staff to address. The drainage issues that have been brought up and. For that, for that time, it's not only beneficial for the neighbors, but it's also beneficial for for the project. Applicant at the same time. I mean, to be assured that things are conforming the way they should be. And because of so much time has passed already, I don't think another two weeks or another month. For a time extension or for. A nonapproval tonight to allow staff to look at the the project a little closer. I just want to reiterate, this is a map that has expired. I've had maps that I have asked time extensions for have conditions changed. Because the view is that it is open to for new discretion at that moment in time. And so it would not, I'm just saying, I'm not. Turned away by the fact that this is, these are conditions that are old that were carried. Turned away by the fact that this is, these are conditions that are old, that we're carrying them on. They can be changed. They can be enhanced. There might be new provisions in place today that were not in place in two thousand seventeen. Uh, the applicant does have. Permits in place and he can continue on the project that he's doing now. And he can back away from the map and say, I'll just finish what I have. Uh, but I just think it's beneficial for us to uh continue the meeting so staff can look at these. More closely, so it benefits both the the neighbors and the applicant at the same time. And then we would be more assured. About what we are proving or not approving.
So I believe we have a motion to approve this item and a second from Randy. Are those? Still applicable, Jason?
Draw my motion.
Okay. So Dennis, are you moving to continue this meeting?
Yes.
This item? Okay, well, so is someone gonna second that?
Can he add to that? So continuing the meeting with specific. You're asking public works division to review?
You um, I I moved that we continue the meeting. Uh, so uh staff. Uh, can look at the the conditions that are in front of us tonight to assure that. All issues, drainage, public improvements, everything be addressed. Uh, appropriately based on today's standards. Is that enough? Is there a second?
I'm not hearing a second.
It's it's hard to um know for sure in the detail of that um. How many staff hours we're putting on this to review and what specific items we want the staff to review. So that's kind of why I'm hesitating on that.
I think from staff's perspective, what I heard is that. Um, the motion asked us to look at these conditions that were actually issued in twenty seventeen. And see if there's any changed um conditions on the site or through our code. That could allow us to update these conditions to respond to those things based on the discretionary action of asking for a new map.
Specifically twenty-three through. Uh, twenty-nine of the conditions uh addressed.
That would give us an opportunity to speak with our public works team and our city attorney on that topic. Since I don't have that professional help tonight.
Do you have any idea what the the staff hours would be? To to just review?
There would be several hours involved with that. There's first of all. There's our discussion and review of the conditions. That's several hours. There's um. Preparing another report, even if it's a brief update on top of this report. There's republishing that report and um. Putting together our packet and um. If we didn't have a hearing already in two weeks, because we don't have an item, we'd be scheduling a hearing where we didn't have one. So it's bringing all of you together as well. So it does involve a lot of people and a lot of time. But that's beside the point. That's what we're here for. Um, if we, if you feel like you don't have the information in hand. To be able to. Fully approve this project and stand behind it one hundred percent of the conditions that are presented to you here tonight. Given all the evidence that's been given to you, then perhaps that's the right course of action regardless of that. I don't think staff time should be. Really a factor. Even.
I appreciate you saying that of all people on this.
I want that, I want the recording.
It is, it is recorded, Jason. Don't worry.
You know, it's it's limited on resources and staff time as we are. I can't have that be a factor in this kind of a determination. Um, if you're gonna add work to me that was related to this, we could talk, but.
Sorry, sorry, I'm 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 trying to appease Dennis here with, um, I mean, in due diligence is our job. Uh, you know, and in making sure that everything is updated to current uh standards. And moving forward, so. You know, if it's um. Minimum amount of staff time and and another meeting, I'm per- I'm perfectly accepting to have another meeting. My time is just as valuable as everybody else's, but uh we're here for a reason, so. I'll go ahead and second that continuation if uh still on the floor.
And can we specify that we are continuing to a date certain so that we don't have to read legal notice?
What's our next meeting?
Two weeks, February twenty-first.
Will it be enough time, Phil? Agrees to continue the meeting.
I think that would be sufficient time to talk with our team early next week and. And determine whether we have the ability to. And whether we suggest amending any of these conditions.
Yeah, I I did hear back from Nick, um, and he um doesn't think any conditions would be added. He would just be deleting conditions out that are already covered under the construction. For clarity.
Sounds like it.
He would be deleting for clarity is what he said, Kelly.
Yeah, well, he said, so there already exists operation and management agreements with the homeowners association or owner of the property of. Prior to final of the permits. Um, that the city requires that addresses maintenance and repair activities that's already included our current city code requirements. And the city has right of entry to inspect if needed, if something goes wrong i- into the future ongoing on the project. Um, and that safeguards um already exist in place under current regulations. For the grading and drainage, so. Um, because they have issued construction permits, there wouldn't be any changes or modifications to the project necessarily. Um, but some of those conditions that related to grading and drainage and building permit issuance timing have already been done. Um, and so um, if you wanted us to take a look at those and and delete the um, the ones that. That no longer apply to just the map being done on a. And project and we could uh do that for clarity.
We have a new tentative map. Uh, that's being requested. Um, I would say that uh diligence on our behalf would be to make sure that the conditions with that map. Are appropriate. Uh, versus relying on what has been issued in the past. And the applicant can continue continue with those permits. Uh, if they don't expire, sometimes they can. But if we're going to approve a new tentative map, we're not extending it. This one has expired. The previous one has expired. Um, I think that we could add additional conditions. Uh, or new conditions to this map and then the applicant can choose whether to. Comply with the new map conditions or not.
Okay, so we have Dennis's um motion to continue this item to a date certain on February twenty-first. Mister uh Jason seconded that. Is that still on the floor?
Yes.
Dennis? Okay, so um. Annette, you want to do a roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Unmute, yes.
Commissioner He?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Vice President King?
No.
Motion passes five, one.
Thank you.
Just a real quick note before we get started. Um, I know we mentioned um recover slow dot org. I just wanted to make sure everybody had the proper. Um, we had, we think we said it backwards, slow recovery, but it's recover slow dot org. If you've had any problems and need to um reach out regarding um emergency flooding or. Any of that, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I don't know about all of you, but it's been almost an hour and a half. I really need a five minute break. So I'm going to call a five minute break because I have that power and we will reconvene at like seven twenty-seven, seven twenty-eight-ish. Just to be specific.
Thank you, Tori.
You're welcome.
Blowing it down with some water, put the coffee down.
Stand awake, already got one down.
Espresso.
Oh, that sounds nice.
Yeah, it does. New parent life equals no sleep.
Yeah, I hear you.
I'm gonna make a cup of coffee, I can hear you guys, so. Do I have to be in video?
Now just go to the hospital, give me one of those caffeine IV bags.
That sounds good.
It'll be up for next two weeks.
I can hang with that. Look at so much done around the house, it'd be so awesome.
Yeah. I didn't drink coffee until I was later in life and I remember going to. Oh, what was the donut shop that was downtown next to the theater? Remember going there one night and drinking a cup of coffee with a friend and just being wired the whole night, I couldn't go to sleep at all. And then when I moved to Italy, I started drinking espresso. And I've been drinking it for thirty years ever since. Doesn't harm me at all, or doesn't keep me awake at all.
You can get real Italian lavasa espresso at the flowerhouse in Slow and it like if you close your eyes, it's like being back in Italy.
Yeah, we have, oh, I can't think of the name of the machine, search of the name. And I never thought it would be by a little pod that would be even close, but it actually is, it has a foam on top and everything and it tastes really good.
Nice.
And.
Dennis inviting us all over.
That's what I heard, yeah, that's totally what I heard. I mean, but not like while we're planning commissioners. Yeah, no.
And Jeff, Jeff isn't invited, he's not here.
Right, exactly, yeah. Annette, are you back?
I am back.
Okay, Phil, are you back?
I cook breakfast at Kiwanis every other week and I bring it.
I am, I'm back, yes.
Do I bring us back to order? Or just end our break? What do I do? Yes.
Yeah.
Back to order.
Back in order.
I, I'm calling this meeting back in order. And I believe our next item is the Barrel Creek item. And I, I know we have a lot of people in the attendees that are probably gonna wanna comment. I really. I want to hear from everyone. But when we open public comment, please, please, please keep it to three minutes, please, so practice your speeches now. Keep it at three minutes because we got a lot of people to get through and we want to hear from everyone and not be here till midnight, so.
And Tori, don't be afraid to chime in after three minutes and say, please conclude.
Okay.
You can do that and just. If you'd like, we can help you out if someone rambles beyond that timeframe.
Okay.
Otherwise.
Because I do wanna hear from everyone, I just, I have to put my kids to bed at some point, so, yes, thank you very, very much, okay. So Barrel Creek, item number three on our agenda and city, take it away.
All right, Kelly's here to present that.
First, Tori.
Yes, of course. Victoria, do you have any ex parte on this item?
No, no expert.
Jason, oh, Jason left. Okay. Greg, any ex parte?
No ex parte.
Randy?
No export.
Dennis?
No expertise.
I will say the ex parte, I said last time, the head architect on this is a friend of mine, I have discussed this project with him multiple times over the years and that's about it, okay, all right, now you can take it away.
Thank you, Tori, so this was the Barrel Creek project, which was continued from our previous meeting in January. The commission did have a couple questions and clarifications that they needed of staff to consider this project. So tonight we'll just be going through those additional pieces of information and clarifications. But we can revisit other items of the project if we have questions. So again, we heard this item at the January seventeenth meeting, it was continued to give both the neighborhood and planning commissioners some additional time, it is a large project. There's a lot of documentation associated with the project. This will not be the final action for the project, the project will go to city council for final action, we've tentatively scheduled that date as February twenty eighth. So the existing zoning on the property is a rural estate. Residential suburban zoning, which allows for single family residential on lot sizes of two and a half to ten acres. Depending on certain site and location characteristics. The site is approximately fifteen point two acres. It's five individual parcels under single ownership, it is across from the Apple Valley Development. Which has a one acre overall density with affordable bonus units included on top of that. It does have the highway one oh one front edge and it is bisected by a seasonal drainage that has some riparian vegetation off to the west. So just an overview, the summary of the application. It is a general plan amendment and zoning amendment to change the zoning and general plan designation of the site. It does also modify where the urban services line currently lies today. There's also a planned development overlay zone on the property that has certain development standards and regulations associated for just this project site. So that we do have a little bit more control over what happens on the project site and ensures that the master plan of development as presented is what gets built. And then we have that youth permit approval for the master plan of development. It also includes a height exception request and a master sign program and then the tentative track tracked map to allow subdivision of the property. So the planning commission did request some additional information on a couple items, which we have prepared for you this evening. The first one was sort of the open space and recreation opportunities on the project and highlighting some of the details of those. The second item was sort of the landscape screening opportunities for the multifamily portion of the project, that portion of the project does back up. To some existing residences and that existing drainage and so you needed a little bit more information on that. You also needed some more information on the project's noise impacts. Especially as it related to some discussion about outdoor amplified sound. And asked for some modified condition language and condition options for some of the single family portions of the project. So a little bit more overview of the project, it is twenty single family residential lots located in this area here. Forty apartment units, which is the multifamily located here, there's a hundred and twenty room hotel towards the rear of the project site here. Sixteen short term cottage hotel units to be future planned here. And then about fifty three thousand square feet of commercial around this central Casio here, this is the existing drainage with existing riparian vegetation off site to the west. So in terms of open space and recreation, the consultant team has identified a number of passive and active open space sites. Throughout the project area. This one was identified previously as part of the project and this is sort of an underground retention basin as part of their drainage plan and has opportunities for some benches and pathways. More of a passive site here. Similarly, there are some detention basins here and here with the number twos on them that can be used. Also as passive recreation, there's kind of this identified open space area here, it is along the freeway, but it is also adjacent to that drainage, which they are enhancing with some vegetation. And could be a place for sort of a dog park area or just some passive use area. That's rather large and then there's some areas adjacent to the multifamily area here. In particular, the applicant team has worked on some enhanced design scenarios for this one. In this location here that could be used as a little bit more of an active park and provide some additional facilities. So this is kind of a blow up of that area where you can see they do have space for sort of a small, a small sort of bouncy net for sort of younger children, maybe a swing set. Some benches and tables, a covered sort of pergola area. And some additional climbing structures and so they are offering that park design as part of this project tonight. So in terms of the multifamily screening, this is the section cut through the multifamily, they have updated it to include what could be in terms of scale and size of landscaping planted within that area. So there are opportunities to plant trees sort of to the rear and in between some of the multifamily structures. There's also opportunity right by the property line to plant some taller screening material as well as some smaller planter areas within the terrace wall feature. And again, there is some existing riparian vegetation off site to the west. That also helps buffer from the existing residential area. So in terms of noise, we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting about outdoor amplified sound, their original application did include youth permit approval to allow outdoor amplified sound for some of their tenants. They do not have tenants specified at this time, but are hoping to have tenants that would create sort of that outdoor use area synergy. Based on some of the noise concerns at the neighbors, the applicant team did decide to withdraw that request as part of this application. That way, individual tenants or a commercial management company, when they know of specific details for requests for outdoor amplified sound could come forward for a youth permit at that time. And then the planning commission or director level, depending on what a youth permit they're asking for, would be able to assess specifics of that noise impact and create very specific conditions for that, so. At this time, this request does not include outdoor amplified sound as part of the request and that would come back at a later date if required. In terms of the modified condition language, the commission did have some discussion about a deed notification requirement on the residential portions of the project notifying any future buyers. That there was potential for farm animals and rural residential uses in the vicinity. That would relate to sort of both with noise from animals or tractors, things of that nature or potential odors. So that would sort of be a pre-warning that that they are coming to an existing rural neighborhood that might have some of those features. The condition also asked for some language about an increased setback for the second floor for the single family residential properties. And we wanted to talk a little bit about the specifics of this one, so staff did add some language into the planned development overlay zone. Which would require an additional five foot setback from the ground floor. It's currently written to apply to all single family residential lots, the commission may wanna discuss whether that is appropriate or whether there were just specific areas of concern. That would need that additional setback to prevent overlook. It's also written in such a way that it does require sort of that wedding cake style setback. If the entire building, ground floor were to be setback at fifteen feet, then that second story would need to be setback at twenty feet. So there is also an option that the commission may want to consider just a straight numerical setback and if an applicant chose to build a straight vertical wall and set the ground floor back to that fifteen feet. Then it could allow for that as well. Also important to note that there are certain types of accessory dwelling units that the state exempts from local regulations related to height and setback and so because ADUs would be allowed in this project, there could always be a backyard ADU that would not have to meet those requirements. In terms of the environmental review, we heard a couple comments about some inconsistencies in the environmental document and needing some updates for some clerical errors. So staff did recirculate that nug deck with some added and clarified information. We did repost the document on February second and so that period runs through February twenty second. That period runs a time before city council will take final action on the document and so we will be open to public comment for that time period. I did also wanna touch base a little bit on affordable housing, we didn't have much of a discussion last time, but the applicant is requesting something different than what is included in the conditions and planning commission can make a recommendation for a different condition to city council. Or can leave it directly up to city council. So our current policy requires twenty percent moderate units in the single family, which is the for sale area. And then twenty percent in the multifamily area with various breakdowns of low, very low and moderate. The applicants are requesting an in lieu fee payment, which is allowed for the council policy upon council approval. But again, the condition is included to actually provide units on site. So in terms of next steps, the planning commission tonight may make a recommendation to city council for approval or denial of the project or could continue it again for additional information should other items come up. We do have a tentatively scheduled hearing for city council for February twenty eighth. That will be the final action on the project unless they choose to continue it for additional information as well. And again, comments can be submitted up to that hearing date on the project. So there are five draft resolutions attached as part of this project, just as an overview, resolution A recommends that the city council certify the proposed mitigated negative declaration, that is the revised one. Draft resolution B is for the general plan amendment, not only to modify the general plan designation of the property, but also move the urban services line to accommodate the project boundary. Draft resolution C would apply to the zoning map change modifying the zoning on the property. And then draft resolution D would be the creation of planned development overlay number thirty eight, which would specifically apply to this project site. And then draft resolution E, which would be the conditionally is permit investing tentative tracked map. Again, these resolutions recommend to the city council in action. So staff's recommendation is to adopt the draft resolutions recommending that the city council approve the Barrel Creek project as conditioned and subject to mitigation monitoring. And as always, the planning commission has three alternatives, you can modify any conditions of approval that are provided for the project. You could again determine that more information is needed and ask staff and the applicant to come back with that information for you at a future date. Or of course, you can recommend denial to the city council. If you do recommend denial, your reasoning should be clearly stated in the motion and based on the findings that are listed in those resolutions. And that concludes staff's presentation, we're available for any questions and I know that the applicant team is also available if needed.
Go ahead, Victoria.
Oh, I got, I got before Dennis this time. Okay, that was, that was just, you know, I've, I've never met you in person yet, so I have to razz you a little bit. Okay, so. I did hear from some neighbors in talking about this project, I don't live very, very close, but somewhat, I live off of Graves Creek Road and so I could bike to this project site, very much so, and I had some neighbors ask about whether or not this would decrease property values because of all of the apartments going in. Valid question, I think, not just for them, which it might not impact our lots, but the ones that are nearby and some of their family friends' properties closer to the project site and so I wanted to see if there was some specific information in regards to property values that the developer himself themselves have, has done or if the if the city knows anything about that, like as far as economic vitality goes.
Oh, I would really caution us getting into that kind of a discussion, we don't have an economic analysis on how rezoning of this property would impact other properties, generally with my experience over the last twenty five years doing these kinds of projects. If a property gets upzoned, in other words, gets changed from very rural residential up to a mixture of commercial and upping the density of residential, the properties surrounding that typically would see a significant increase in value and the property itself would see a significant increase in value. But that can change dramatically based on the land use that gets approved in that thing. In other words, if we were to build a prison here, there would be an impact to the neighborhood around it in terms of values in a very negative way. But since this is not proposed to be something detrimental to the neighborhood, it's something that provides amenities for the neighborhood, it provides shopping potential for the neighborhood, it provides tourism and it provides housing that's in, at least portions of it, very similar to the existing neighborhood. And also provides that buffering from a very significant freeway noise that one would assume there might be positive impacts to property values. Which is probably very different than that neighborhood might feel today about how this project might impact theirs, but anything I say right now is totally an assumption and so it can go a lot of different ways and so I don't think I want staff to, to jump in and say, hey, you know, we have this analysis and we really think that property value is gonna go way up or way down around this project because there's so many variables.
There are a lot of variables, yeah, and I think.
But, but a good thing is, the project does come along with conditions to do significant improvements to the road and adding sidewalks and adding landscape and adding public improvements and those public improvements do typically enhance property value when you get better aesthetics and when you have more opportunity for people to be able to work or go to things or amenities close by. It's, it's a contribution, so. It's, but it's hard to say, we don't have that, we don't have definitive economic analysis to that extent.
Okay, so at this time, you wouldn't like any other staff that might be on the call to talk about that.
Unless we have definitive financial information that's directly correlated to that. So that's, that's challenging, you know.
Yeah, that seemed to be the biggest rub for hearing a lot of the public comments reviewing them on the emails and then just seeing too that in, to piggyback off of that, the question around, well, yes, we as a city do not develop, that's not our job, we vote on development projects and across the street, we have a similar project and so not knowing though, when that would actually be developed and what that would bring to our town when, you know, that's all a big, there, there's lots of variables within that too.
Absolutely, there absolutely is, but I'll tell you that the city's been contemplating this area as a commercial node for more than twenty years. And that includes both sides of the freeway surrounding Del Rio and surrounding the intersection. And anywhere in a task area where we have a freeway interchange that passes over the freeway and intersects with El Camino Real. We've identified as a potentially significant commercial node. And are, you know, focusing those areas for economic development and for positive change and contribution to our community and the addition of had a household jobs and beautification.
Sure, that's a data point, thanks.
Yeah.
Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you. You're with me, I have five questions and they're kind of round about on my piece of paper. There was a comment by staff about ADU setbacks. My question is, I, I believe I'm under the belief that with our new ordinance and the standards that we've included within our new eighty ordinance, there are set golden for based on height. I just wanna make sure that is, that's true or not. Discussion about, excuse me?
That, that's correct, Dennis, they are related to height, I believe it's eighteen feet, you can be four feet.
Okay. So there are, you can build an ADU, but depending on the size of it, it might be setback farther than four feet.
Correct.
Thank you. A discussion about passive recreation. I don't know, what, what, what's the definition for what passive is, is it is it merry-go-round passive or is it just walking trails or what is pass when you talk about recreation?
So generally, we think of walking trails or just an open accessible area that's landscaped as more passive, it might have a bench included. When we talk about active, we usually think of play structures, barbecue areas, things, you know, that actually provide something to do.
So although this area doesn't, won't accommodate, if I have a trail and I can ride a mountain bike on it, that's passive?
I think if it's large enough for a mountain bike trail, something like stadium park, then we would consider that more active, but this, at this scale. But this at this scale, these these small walking paths or accessible landscaped areas would be more passive in nature.
Thank you. You had shown a cross section on the multifamily use building to the to an adjacent parcel. Could you show that, please? Do you know the horizontal distance? Or say the approximate horizontal distance between the new units and the existing units on adjacent properties?
We can certainly measure that off of some of our aerial systems. The applicant probably has that information on hand as well.
Hundred feet. Fifty eight.
Well, I can. Let's check it out while we keep talking. I'll take a look at GIS right now while she's answering other questions and I'll see if I can figure that out.
I appreciate that. There were letters, a letter from California Allied for Responsible Economy talking about the adequacy of the mitigated negative deck and then also the timing of the comment period with respect to the planning commission making a recommendation to the city council. You had briefly addressed that, but not specifically with respect to their comment about us making a recommendation without having that complete comment period pass is to staff.
I believe in their comment letter, they had implied that they believe that planning commission was taking final action. And you are not taking a final action on this project. You are just a recommending body to the city council, which will take final action, and that will happen after the close of public comment period.
They had mixed words in there. There were some points where they used the word approval. And there were other times where they used recommendation in that letter. It was always four or five, six pages or so. I'm just wondering if there's any, well, based on the recommendation, staff is saying that it's possible for us to make a recommendation tonight without having the comment period closed. Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, with respect to the director's comment, I've been in this business since April second nineteen eighty one. I remember it specifically when I was hired. And I agree with his evaluation about or comment about values of property. I have never known a piece of property get devalued because of a project like this. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay. So we will open public comment for the barrel creek plan development that was continued from January seventeenth, twenty twenty three. Again, I will let you know when you are at three minutes, just so that we can make sure we hear from everyone. And I will ask you to conclude your comments at that three minute mark.
And I and I don't believe the applicant has a presentation, but if anybody from the applicant team, normally we have them speak first, wants to speak, please raise your hand and I'll open it up to you.
Okay.
Okay, our first speaker we have is Richard Franco. Richard?
I think that Darren is part of the development, so we were gonna get the development team first. Darren, you should be able to speak.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I do not have additional presentation to add to Kelly. I think Kelly and the city did a great job with the presentation. I would like to provide a response to the comment I heard regarding distance from the property line to the existing residents in the section that we provided at the apartments.
I think it was more the the building to the to the other building, not the property line.
Yeah, so from property line to the building is roughly a hundred and fifty feet. And from the building property line from our apartments to the property line is roughly twenty feet. So it's roughly a hundred and seventy feet between the apartment in the section proposed to the existing residents to the west.
Thank you. I wasn't able to open the GIS system for it's just kind of spinning away. Perfect.
And that's it. I'm here for any other comments you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Okay, so if you'd like to make a comment on this, please raise your hand in Zoom or press star nine if you're on the phone, and we are ready for our first comment.
Okay. There are no hands currently raised. Oh, there we go. I'm Richard Franco coming back to you. Go ahead, Richard.
Good evening. My name is Rick Franco and I represent California's Allied for Responsible Economy. I appreciate the opportunity to address you all again. I'll just start off by briefly addressing Commissioner Schmidt's question about our comment that we submitted today. I mean, I fully understand the commission's role on this project is to make recommendations to the city council, and the council is the final decision maker. Our comment is, and our question is, why would you make recommendations without full information on the project because public comment and state review periods remain open? The city reissued the mitigated negative deck. And it wasn't available on the city's website until last Friday, and the new public comment period runs through at least February twenty second. And while we did submit some preliminary comments today, we're we're still reviewing the revised document, including with experts and expect to file further comments before the end of the comment period. The city has already made changes to the MND based on public comment, and it's entirely possible that further changes, including potentially new mitigation measures, may be made after receiving and reviewing further public comments. And so we believe it's just premature for you to make recommendations tonight based on an incomplete SEQA document and process. And while we do appreciate the city's willingness to make changes in response to public input, we believe the revised MND, at least based on our initial review, still has numerous deficiencies under SEQA. For example, at the previous meeting, I did point out the the MND does not properly analyze the project's noise impacts because it lacks substantial evidence and really any evidence supporting the conclusion that the project won't cause significant noise impacts. I know that the outdoor amplified sound issue has been resolved for now, but the project still includes outdoor uses with the restaurants, bar, central breweries, other potential noise generating outdoor uses. And the city did make some revisions to the noise analysis, but it still lacks evidence. It now includes the assertion that the project's design will self mitigate noise impacts to surrounding neighbors. It's not really clear what that means. It's a claim without any technical supports, expert opinion, or other evidence explaining how that will work. And this is clearly can't support a SEQA determination. City has yet to provide any noise measurements to establish existing ambient noise levels. No estimates have been made of either construction or operational noise, and there's therefore no basis to make any conclusion about the project's potential noise impacts to neighbors, nor has there been any mention of potential noise impacts to the new residents of the project's residential developments. One other issue on the construction timeline that we raised last time, the MND still contains multiple conflicting descriptions of the construction timeline. The project description now suggests that the project will be built out over five to eight years. The greenhouse gas analysis states that the project will include development over a four year period or construction over a four year period. And the air emission modeling, which there's some new modeling, it looks like.
You're at three minutes, Mr. Franco. You could please conclude.
I will conclude. Thank you. The modeling now measures two different phases of construction, which looks to be a total of about a little over two years. So without a clear and consistent construction timeline, the city has no basis to estimate the project's construction emission impacts. There are other issues that and we will submit those in a connection with the public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franco.
Okay, our next speaker we have is Godfrey Care.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I just got through a share with KIA California. I just wanted to add to Franco's comments. And essentially, the courts have said that one of the goals of the environmental review process is to protect informed self governments. And unfortunately, that goal will be undermined today if the commission adopts the resolution A, because you are essentially being asked to recommend an action based on an inadequate document. So partly what we're trying, we're trying to say is just to promote informed self government. I think the commission should continue the item until the environmental document is complete. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other attendees that would like to speak? Please raise your hand if so. We do have Mr. Loughlin. Go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Oh, I just, it's Peter Loughlin, Loughlin Company. Just being a neighbor on the corner there. Just want to reiterate my support for this project. It's exactly what Tascadero needs for commercial visitor serving and which would be a great boost for the local economy and for businesses in the area as well as all the residential that's going to be built across the freeway as far as apartments, higher end apartments and affordable apartments for our tenants to be able to visit as well as for people from out of the area. So I just want to just reiterate my support, and I really appreciate all the work the city has done and RRM and the my neighboring developer. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loughlin. Any other public comment?
Do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Hey, I will go ahead and close public comment then. I don't know. I kind of like that timer thing, though. I have to do that more often. Yes, Dennis.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the city council to approve this project.
I'll second.
Annette roll call.
Okay, I didn't hear who. I didn't see who seconded that. Sorry, that would happen very fast.
Randy did that. Yeah, that was super fast. Now, are you are you making one motion for all of the resolutions?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And can we clarify that it's with staff's recommended conditions with no modifications?
Yes.
With staff's recommendations of no modifications?
And with the conditions as proposed, Annette.
Okay. Does Dennis need to read that whole thing? Are we good?
I think Dennis, if you could just specify that it is the adoption of draft resolutions A through E for clarity.
I recommend that the planning commission adopt resolutions A through E, recommending that the city council approve the barrel barrel creek project as condition and subject to mitigation monitoring and the new recommendations by city staff presented tonight.
Okay, are we ready for a roll call? We are. All right, Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
As I vote on this, I just have to state a few things. Overall, my consideration with this is we've been pretty responsive to the public concerns. And as information's coming in and the process goes forward, I feel we've been more than accommodating and if this than that, we've been very, very good on that. So with that being said, I vote yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner He?
Yes.
Vice Chair Person King? Yes. Motion passes six zero. And I encourage any member of the public to review the staff reports that have been posted and to comment to the city council and make sure that your voices are heard because they're important, whether you support or don't support this project. So and I appreciate all the members of the public who have participated in this. So yes, Victoria.
I just have a follow up question that didn't relate to whether my vote would be cast or not tonight regarding the the active open space and the playgrounds. So if there's specific details on that going forward, because the project hasn't been approved, where would we go to talk about that as a community?
So if you have specific questions about the project, you can email myself or Kelly. We can send any member of the public or any member of the commission or the council upcoming what we have and details on that. And if we don't have all the details, we can even ask the applicant team if they've got additional details on those things and try and describe that to you more clearly.
Okay, yeah, because yeah, there's definitely a couple of things that I think could be mitigated that I'd like to bring up. And then there's just some questions that I have about it, so.
And you can always go to the city council meeting and bring those up there, too, because there'll be a more thorough presentation, too.
Yeah, and now that you've taken action on the project, we can't really talk about it anymore. But at the council now is where it goes. And so we'll do our best to provide a thorough presentation, and so will the applicant team on all those details.
True.
At this point.
You only have three minutes if Tori's there.
That's right. They have a huge timer that pops up on the screen. It's very intimidating.
Is going to keep everybody to three minutes as well. So it's the same way.
Tori's gonna have a fly slaughter in person for us. I can already tell.
It's such a good idea.
God, would I do?
I do want to say, Tori, you did an awesome job.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Great.
I'm making my move, guys, because we're not voting tonight. So now you know how I be every time. Um, all right, so.
Are we sure Jeff didn't disappear, Tori?
No comment.
I plead the fifth. Actually, I thought I saw him pop into the the attendees for a moment, but maybe I was just dreaming.
He did.
Oh, he did. Okay, he's checking up on me. See, one of y'all warned him, didn't you? Okay, so does any commissioner have any comments or reports? I know Victoria likes to keep us updated on the art, too. Yes, Dennis.
I tried to take some pictures today. For some reason, I couldn't put them into my email, put them in my background. But as I mentioned before, I live next to what now is the Brown Sugar Cookie Company. They're nice neighbors, except for they have a stack, a huge stack of pallets that they're placing out their back door, their building that looks like shit. And I'm sure it's a fire hazard at the same time.
Are you filing a code enforcement case right now, Dennis?
Excuse me?
Are you filing a code enforcement complaint right now, Commissioner Schmidt?
Oh, I'm wondering if there's anything I could do about it.
File a code enforcement complaint.
I think you've kind of done it already now. I've heard it. So we're gonna have to investigate this issue, so. I refer that to our building official to have a look, see.
They've been stacking since day one. It's fifteen feet tall. Again, I would say the fire department probably would have something to say with it because it's against their building. The other thing that I want to bring about is people driving on our street on Santa Rosa Road. Live next to Santa Rosa Elementary School. It's a twenty five mile per hour warrant area. This afternoon, when I left at two forty five to go to my accountant's office, I got to the corner of Santa Rosa and Tascadero Avenue, and the cars reviewed up to make a right hand turn there along the length of the school, around the corner, and all the way down the street of Tascadero Road. There was no way for me to make a right turn there because of oncoming traffic the other way. And I'm sure the police department and the fire department would not be happy. And I'm sure the police department and the fire department would not be happy with all those cars queuing up and standing there and waiting for their kids to come and get in their car and leave. This happens in the morning. It happens in the evening. I've had it in front of my driveway where people queue up in front of my driveway and won't move so I can leave because they don't want to lose their place. It's definitely a traffic hazard and can be done by the police department to mitigate this issue.
I suggest you.
It's a big problem.
Also present that issue to the Tascadero School District. That's really, they are responsible for organizing pickup and drop-off. They are responsible for student transportation and buses and they have not been doing their job.
So they're not responsible for the street, which is our city street. It could be policed at this point. Actually, I, I was walking.
If there's, if there's violations in the, if there's violations in parking or anything else, yeah, you would not, you might need to contact that, but it's a long-term, long, ongoing issue.
I found it amazing this morning when I tried to take the pictures of the pallets. I came back home and I had my camera up and I was taking pictures, videos of the traffic going by at forty-five miles per hour.
Let's talk about that separately because it's not a topic the planning commission can deal with.
Yeah, it's just that it needs to be policed.
I understand.
Thank you. PM peak hour.
Randy's got his hand raised.
Yeah, Randy, go ahead.
So some, some huge Tascadero news that is coming down the pike. I can tell you for a fact, the utilities are going at the new Taco Bell.
Yes.
It, it took a while, but I know that they have attentive friends and family that they're gonna do their thing to their, for their business to make sure it's running right, but it should be pretty close to around the corner that they're going, so.
Okay, I need, I need friends. I love having friends. Be keen at atascadero.org. I could be your friend. You don't understand. My daughter and I are very excited. Our goats love cinnamon twists. You can even meet my goats, because friends, you can meet my, anyway, sorry.
Are goats friends?
Yeah, well, no, the goats are mine, but my friends can come over and feed my goat cinnamon twists.
Sam, Sam, do you have a working camera at all?
Uh, yeah, I do. It's a little dark in my room, but I'll.
Okay. All right. Well, I was wanting to introduce our new assistant planner.
I was wondering who the lurker was.
I'm the new assistant planner. Nice to meet everyone.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Sam. Welcome. Thank you.
Just been with us for a few days now and I wanted to introduce him to the commission and steer our conversation in the right direction tonight before we go astray, so.
I feel like he needs like flashing neon lights behind.
I know. I look like I'm just a floating head right now. Making it even worse.
Put your hands up like this. Put your hands up like this. There you go.
Where are you from? Uh, well, I was, I grew up in Southern California, went to school in the Bay Area and then was just looking for assistant planner jobs in California. This came up, but I'm loving it in Tascadero so far.
Lucky, lucky you. Welcome to Tascadero.
Thank you.
Got to meet him at the open house.
Yep.
Nice.
Yeah.
Welcome aboard.
Back on topic, any other commissioner comments and reports? Okay. Phil, do you have a director's report or was that?
Yeah, a couple of things I want to mention real quick. Uh, we will have another meeting. That wasn't the case before we started this hearing tonight, but we do have a hearing now for the twenty-first, the continuation of the map. So we'll be looking at that and we'll see everything else gets on that agenda. I do want to remind commissioners of a couple of things. One is of that opportunity for some training. If you're interested, if you've got the time, those are really valuable. It's free. It's local, right here in San Luis Obispo. Let me know about that. The other thing I want to tell you about, and Randy and Jason already came to one of those. You might have come to another one, but is the downtown infrastructure enhancement plan workshops that we're having. Drop in at any one of those. We don't have any going on this week, but we have some more of them coming up next week. If you want to get the schedule, Lorelei or myself can send that to you when those are. There's even some virtual opportunities coming up, but please take a moment, chime in, fill out a quick, we'll fill out a quick survey for you on your preferences in the design. Such an important project for downtown Tascadero. And if you want to weigh in on that, but otherwise, staff is extremely busy these days with our general plan and a number of projects. But if you have any questions, I'm here to help.
Thank you, Phil.
And he calls you back quickly because I called him this morning and he called me back in like an hour. It's amazing. That goes for everybody, not just planning commissioners. Reach out to Phil. We'll talk to you.
That's what happens.
We, yeah, I will.
That's right. Okay, so if there's nothing further, I will.
Well, I had one question.
Oh, oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, in regards to the virtual opportunities and then the physical ones, is that something that the city council or the staff is considering ongoing as a good strategy? Knowing that March, we're gonna go to all physical?
Are you referring to like public workshops when we do those in the future?
Public workshops and these, these meetings that we have, the commission meetings, council meetings.
The planning commission meetings, unfortunately, we will not have an option to do virtual. So beginning in March,
Right.
Um, we will be fully in person, not hybrid, not virtual. And we don't have the IT staff abilities to go hybrid like city council does. So it would be an incredible significant additional budget. I'd love that to be the opportunity, but we're solely going to be in person for planning commission. Now for future public workshops, we're always going to be able to throw out a virtual option, in-person option for those because we don't have to have it staffed by a big team with cameras and all that stuff going on. We can just do this like we're doing right now. But because of the changes in state law, because of the changes in local policy, we can't continue doing the virtual only planning commission hearings, so.
Yeah, I'm not asking personally for me, because personally I am looking forward to not having to put the almost two-year-old down to bed on certain nights of the month and being able to walk out of the city hall with y'all. That sounds good. But I think for the amount of families I've seen and the amount of ability for just any individual working to come in and, and be able to participate in workshops, commission meetings, council meetings. I think that without doing an analysis where we spend a bunch of money, it's clear that we get better public participation when we do hybrid. So I just wanted.
I think we do. I would agree and I, I would hope that we can in the near future have both options available because I, I totally agree with you. Yeah.
Face time with our phones.
On, on that topic though, since I am, I guess, the comedian of the group, I do want to clarify the dress code. Pants are necessary. So I just want you all to know that. Okay, preferably not pajama pants, but I suppose as long as they're clean, it's fine. Also shoes, no slippers. Okay, we need to dress professionally for planning commissioners.
So my PJs are juicy on them. Those aren't recommended, gotcha.
Not recommended, but not forbidden.
So I can work.
Jason just.
I, I've become accustomed to this, so I, I just would recommend that we just hold the planning commission meetings at my house. Is that okay? Just so I, I, I'm comfortable, you know, I like it.
I mean, I mean, this, not just for you guys, it's for me too. I was like, oh man, I gotta like not change when I get home from work. And so I just wanted to make it clear, it's an expectation of everyone. Pants and shoes, please. Okay.
Showers.
Well, yeah, I guess, I guess we should add that on there too. Yeah, showers.
I have to find my top hat now.
City Hall is a normal looking place, yeah.
Everybody's all excited about it.
You don't have to go over the top.
Okay, so if there's no further comments, I will adjourn our meeting to our next regular meeting on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three at six o'clock and I will see you all there on Zoom.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Thought you were talking to him earlier.
Bye, everybody. Have a good night.